I applaud the leaders of the United States of America and the European Republic for which it stands, on a mission and under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
I'm just gonna get through on the screen. Okay, yeah, um, I need to, one change in the agenda to have someone read the public input statement since Kate is not here. Do we have a next session for that information? Second?
Second.
All in favor? I do want to read it.
I haven't.
Okay, go right ahead.
The first public input session is a twenty-one minute session with each person having no longer than three minutes in which to make a statement. But a second public input session may be held at the end of the meeting if allowed by the board chairs. Each speaker will give his or her name, address, and reason for speaking. Public input is designated for district residents, but the board chair may grant non-residents the opportunity to address the board. Statements concerning subject matter that falls under the law regarding executive sessions, for example, matters involving personnel cannot be made during public input. We as a community pledge to treat each other as we wish to be treated. We pledge to seek understanding when there may be disagreement. Regardless of outcomes or opinions, we pledge to look forward with respect. This is a time for comments and or questions for the board, but please be aware that questions may not be able to answer at, be answered at this meeting.
Okay, so next is public input. Do we have any, who would like to speak tonight? Then we're moving on to number three minutes of June twentieth first. Anybody see anything?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June twentieth.
Second? All those in favor?
Oh, I wasn't there. Excuse me.
We had five people, right? Are you abstaining? Oh, wait, Kate somewhere.
Oh, it's Kate.
Five.
Hold on, I'm still waiting for Kate.
Oh, yeah.
She said that she is in, but I'm not seeing her.
I would understand if she's missing.
Oh, yeah.
She's too.
This is the land of Lebanon and I have no service on this one.
Yeah, we're just, okay, we're gonna move on then to the minutes of July eleventh. Motion to approve the minutes of the eleven. Okay, all those in favor approving the July eleventh? Have everybody? Alright, the July twenty-ninth minutes. Oh, that's favor zero in the audience.
Yeah.
That was, that was sort of, that was the approval of the, of transportation.
That's right, okay, that's right. Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the twenty-ninth. And I'll second. Okay, all those in favor? You are here. Still got five.
We still got, okay.
And then the minutes of August, August fourteenth.
We would like to table those till next week, just because we need to add a few more details in that. That's okay.
Do you need to make a motion to table them?
Probably.
All those are favorable. Okay, so we still have the twenty-fifth to do and August fourteenth. Okay, next. We have a donation.
Okay, so we have from the Poussons, Mr. and Mrs. Pousson who live in South Berwick. Um, they have donated to the music program, uh, let's see, a Yamaha. Uh, Goria.
Clap, clap.
Thank you, I knew I wasn't gonna get it right, thank you. Uh, model CVP three oh one. So Denise, um, sent, has a letter for them, ready to go because, um, we need to have, they need to have it for their records, so.
And it's digital, so they actually can move it.
It is, yes. Right, right. And it's for the Eric Milton School.
Motion to accept. All those in favor? Business. Denise's part.
It will be very brief, as it says. So, um, I had a question from a newer board member about the warrants and the things that you're signing. And realized that this might be good information for all of you. So what I did was I attached a sample of the warrants you'll generally see. Um, and just for some scaffolding, I guess, one of the most important things you do is sign warrants. Because that's paying our bills officially. And so it's super important, um, when you get those, that you review them and sign them. Uh, we have accounts payable warrants, and then we have a multitude of payroll warrants. The system generates all of these checks with our input, but the system generates it and they generate this report. Let's see, one of the questions I had, and we can, was the payroll warrants. Why do we see so many payroll warrants, right? Cause there are many. Um, you will see a warrant that has a lot of names on it, and that is the one that is paying our staff by weekly. So that is just the general payroll warrant. In addition, you'll see something called Omni. Omni is our third-party administrator, and they handle our four oh three B accounts. So when we generate a check for Omni, we get a warrant for that. And that's all the, the money that's going from people's paycheck to their four oh three B account. So that's what that warrant is for. Um, the second one that you will see sometimes is MAE-PERS. MAE, MAE-PERS, um, is the public retirement system in meaning. And we are required to submit both withholdings from employee checks and our district contributions to those employees' accounts on a, um, a regular basis. There are different timelines and things, but, so you will see, um, a MAE-PERS check usually once a month, I think. Um, and that's again us paying our, our withholdings and our share. You'll also see something, um, occasionally called the MAE-PERS GLI. That is the group insurance that teachers and other staff qualify for through the main state retirement. So all of these checks are not generated on the same day, so you will see them in, in, they won't necessarily correspond with exact dates. It depends on when we have to pay. Um.
You talk about group insurance.
Yes. Life insurance, I believe. Group life, yes, so it's life insurance. It is optional, um, and I don't know lots of specifics about it, but, um, it's available to, um, members of MAE-PERS. And then, um, of course, you have the accounts payable warrant, which will be, um, we make accounts payable checks and payroll checks in the same week. So those generally go kind of hand in hand. You get an AP warrant though, once a month, and that, um, summarizes all the checks we've paid through our payable system for the month. All of our vendors, whether it's, you know, reimbursements to staff or payments to contractors, things like that.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Ask a question anyway. Did Jen do it differently this time? Because I got a list of warrants with no place to sign. And then I later got the one to sign it. Maybe we're doing this differently this year.
So, nope, you, the ones that you get electronically through DocHub are the ones for you to electronically sign.
Right.
The other ones were to be attached to this. All she did was attach it to the agenda. And I wanted you to have samples, in case you wanted to go back and look at them more depth and have answers. Um, if you want to look at, we'll, we'll take, um, if you look at the payroll warrant dated eight nine, it's the fourth one, I believe, on your agenda. Um, the other question I, um, had to do with these columns, and what do they, what are, what are these columns for? So, again, some of it is self-explanatory. The check number is what check number the system generated and the date. There's a code, which is the employee code and their name. Um, the next is check group, and if you look down, you'll see different, ones are primarily, but you'll see a two or a nine. Um, those are payroll's way of tracking different things. So for example, um, if I get my regular pay, but then I also coach basketball and get a stipend, I'll usually get a second check for that stipend. So the code here would be a two. So they use them for different things to track it and make their lives easier. So there's nothing, um, I guess, important as a reader to that, um, but we can, if anybody had questions, it's easier for us to track if we know.
What is nines?
Um, let me see what that nine is. It's something, I don't remember. I don't remember what a nine is.
And I'm looking at the names and it doesn't ring a bell as to.
Yep, I, there are some, for example, we have some stipends that are paid every pay to staff, so all year long, they get it with their pay. There are others that are done in, well, sums like twice a year, if you have a year long, or if you're a coach, you might get two or three during the season. So I think the nine has to do with some, with stipends of some sort.
Yes, because I'm seeing their names, same name, right? One is one and the nine is a.
Correct. Yep, so it's an additional payment, but I, and I think it's for the, whether it's paid every pay or whether it's a periodic, I mean, a less regular payment.
Yeah. Yep.
Um. And I think that's all. Um, and again, I don't think I've done this with any group before, so I, you know.
This is a good group.
My, you know, just, it's an important part of what you do and.
I have another question for you.
Yeah, so, I was on board before, we didn't do it this way. We approved him at every meeting and physically signed.
Yes.
And I remember attorneys would come in and tell us occasionally that it's super important that we not just sign them all, but that we appear engaged in this and ask questions.
Mm-hmm.
So when I came back on the board this time and we're just.
Doing it home, basically.
Yes.
So do people email you questions or?
They, you're welcome to email me if you catch me in the hall, you're welcome to ask however you want.
But does that, so do the auditors care? Does anybody ever ask about that? Cause that was the, the implication was that if we, if there is a record of us having an actual discussion about them.
Um, so I, nobody's ever brought that to my attention.
Okay.
If you wanted to have a conversation at each board meeting and just check in and ask the question, I'm happy to do that. It's not an issue. Yeah, I, I will follow up, I have my friendly auditor coming in, not too long. And, um, I'll just, I'll put it on my list for her, just to inquire.
Okay, that's a good one, thanks.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea, just like if we had change in board members every July, just, just.
Yeah.
Do this again, I think it's a good reminder, if we could just put it annually on our board meetings in July, we have enough to, to, to talk about this.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah. Great.
I appreciate the information and I appreciate the board member who asked the information.
Absolutely.
I couldn't have answered.
It was good, it was, it was really good, and I didn't wanna, you know, I don't wanna take a lot of time with it because it's cursory, you know, it's cursory information. But maybe as you dig into, um, if you guys, maybe you have more questions, so I'm happy to field those.
Figure out what a nine is.
I'm sorry.
Figure out what a nine is.
Yes, I'll come back, I'll know next time. Okay, alright, thank you.
So one of the intents also with the business brief is that when there is something that comes up more general in nature such as this, um, that Denise will come in, we'll put business brief on the agenda, we'll, we'll have the topics there, and Denise will come in and talk through some of that.
Absolutely. Yeah, well, yes, very formal, but I figured too, as we are, believe it or not, prepping for the next budget.
Oh, please, not the P.
Yes. Um, there will be things, maybe we wanna go over, just as a high level, you know, get everybody on the same page kind of thing, so. We might, uh, use it a little bit more this fall, I mean, as we get into the season, so.
Alright, thank you very much. School district opening.
Okay. This is the paper that's going around, um, our student enrollment. And I will just, there's copies of this. For the audience who would like to see a copy. So as you're looking at this, you will see the September, Kate's on.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm turning her up because she's having our time hearing the board. Partially because you're sitting back behind her, so.
Okay.
Speak loudly, please.
Okay. It's Kate, we, yeah.
So as you're looking at this document, September, and then the enrollment goes underneath it, that is this, today, as of today. What we did was we also added June of twenty twenty-four on the right-hand side, so that is the last enrollment we took in June. So you can see, for example, yeah, you can see the ebb and flow, but you can also see like kindergarten is definitely up this year.
Right, so that, that's the number that actually moves to that. Like kindergarten two hundred and eighteen, but we only, we got.
No, it's the other way. So in June of twenty-four, there were a hundred and ninety-three kindergarten students. That moves down to first grade, one ninety-four. So that's, that's how you can track it.
Yeah.
Um, so Berwick, so we, our kindergartens are lar, is larger than what, um, it was last year. But if, if you go through this and you see the ebb and flow, right now we're only up three students across the district.
Hmm, did that kindergarten increase hits one school or is it spread out?
Uh, we have larger class sizes in Lebanon and Berwick, so they're running about nineteen.
What does this mean without PG?
Um, postgraduate, so the postgra, PG is postgraduate, so we have some students that, um, for their IEP plans, they are able to stay in the district till twenty-two years old. So that, um, so we do it with that and without that.
Is this, I'm curious about the trend like over the last like five years, eight years, is, can, are you able to pull that data, just as we can see enrollment over the last?
We'll be able to, it's.
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, it's looking like it was trending down and this seems like we're leveling, which is good. Uh, but we can follow this numbers, yeah.
The, the second grade was the bo, the, like, the biggest bubble we had seen was second grade.
Last year.
Yes.
Last year.
To now they're, yeah. That's a big, yeah, the big topic, yeah.
And that was our understanding of why that happened when we looked at it was, a lot of families kept their students home from kindergarten with COVID in that year.
Right.
And then had them go in the following year. So, yeah, yes. And we don't have all the records requests yet, you know, some schools have not yet sent them, so we could fluctuate a little bit, but we will, uh, go through this again. So a few other things, we, uh, started last week with three days of new teacher orientation. We had a very small group of new teachers relative to previous years, and, um.
That's a win.
That is. So those three days included some building-based training and then some district-based work around, uh, student safety, building safety, just different, you know, um, like places going that we use, the app that we use for that. We had, um, Heather LaFrance, uh, present on trauma, trauma in schools. So she worked with the high, you know, the upper levels and the elementary levels. Elementary had a full day of Rika training for math prior to starting. Um, we had a literacy piece, we had, uh, um, uh, discussion on mentoring, teacher evaluation, supervision, so we really spent that time doing that. The beginning of this week was our two staff days, um, prior to the start of student days. So we started with, um, our big assembly, but we always have our gathering in the, um, auditorium at the high school. And then we had that, and then everybody went into their buildings for their building-based work, their teamwork, um, getting their, you know, last-minute things for their rooms. And then we had students for the last two days, and that had, has gone very well, I'm pleased to say, uh, because, you know, it's always, for me, it's the buses, you know, cause that causes a lot of, you know, can cause a lot of stress with the unknown. We have a new app, um, and parents are re, were really able to see where the buses are going and what they're doing. So that, we've had some preliminary positive feedback.
Track the buses.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, one on, two.
And it, and that's like. Yeah, and it alerts you, it like sends a notification, so you don't have to like keep checking and it will just say your bus will be here in five minutes.
That's crazy.
Yeah. We were talking with Brenda this afternoon, saying, are the buses all in? So she sent me a screenshot of the map with these two little buses that were left out there, and they literally look like, like, you know, remember the, the game of life? Those little buses? Yeah, it's pretty funny.
So four fifty yesterday, the last bus dropped off, and four fifty today as well, so.
Yeah.
We've had historically, you know, some buses that come in very late, so that was really, really a strong first two days. Yeah.
How many they get on a break, right?
Three fifteen, three twenty, three thirty, depending on the buses.
And that will tighten up, that will tighten up.
It does tighten up, it does tighten up.
Have you, um, have you got any feedback from the bus drivers? You know, I'm aware they're, they're like using like an iPad or something like that, right?
They, they do.
And it shows the room, saying where the pickup's at. Have you heard any feedback from the bus drivers regarding that?
Not yet, not yet. Hoping to do that next week, yes.
I talked to some this morning, cause we had our state inspection today as well, so the mechanic, everybody, it was all hands on deck. Um, and most of the drivers are feeling pretty good, but the, next week will it really be that telling as to all of the high school kids on the buses? So like, one of the, the gals was like, I don't even have all my kids yet, like this have not, it just hasn't clicked into the regular schedule yet. So I think next week will be the telling for them.
So the bus inspection went really well, we had, um, all the buses passed. There was one issue with one of the buses that was rectified right at the moment, so no concerns there. The food is all strong and good, uh, let's.
We're one of the, uh, I talked to the head inspector and he said, I wish that Oliver, us, every school that we went to was as good as yours. And the mayor fabulous.
So it was golden.
Yes, a big problem, yeah.
Our buildings looks, look great, I know you've been in here, some of you have been in the other buildings, we'll get to other buildings as we go through. Um, we had two extra weeks because we got out a little earlier this year than we did last year. And that really, really helped get some projects going, we were ahead of schedule on a lot of things, just the routine cleaning. Um, so that really allowed for projects to get done, which is, you know, always a, a really good thing to kind of knock some of that off, off the list. Um, let's see. I, you know, um, I think that's it as far as opening day information. I, I did wanna talk about as, as part of, I guess, opening day, um, the enrichment piece, because we've talked about the enrichment piece. So we've, um, had a couple meetings with the administrators and the specialists, and, um, have come up with a schedule to, uh, focus the enrichment, grade two, three, four, and five. And, um, the specialists are taking this month to work through the planning and how it's going to look, and really coordinating with some of the grade level teams, so that there's some tight, um, cross work, you know, cross-curricular work with that. Um, and then they're going to s, to be starting outside of their building and the other buildings, starting September third, I believe, is the first time that they start that. So our world language teacher will be working, um, you know, with the fifth grade students, um, and exposing students to some world history and different things to music and art and food. And, um, and then we have some great ideas for PE, working with, you know, how to, how to do very planful, mindful, um, brain breaks, and how that's gonna look and how that helps with focus and stamina in the classroom when academics are going on. Uh, so those are just a sampling of what, what's going on, but the, the conversation with the, we sat in on the conversation with the specialists and the principals, and it was really positive and really, really creative. You know, it's just now a matter of working with the teachers at, at the PLC levels to, to get that, to make sure that, you know, like for art, um, Kate Johnson, who's one of the teachers that's gonna be doing enrichment, is gonna work with the team and say, okay, what are you covering in writing? And how can we work on the writing and the art, it's together at the same time.
So this is just for those traveling teachers you're talking, not the ones that are already school-based?
So, yeah. Yes, yes. Right, correct, correct. Yeah, so, so it's coming, and, um, yeah, so like I said, we're taking the next couple weeks to just work through that, communicate with teams, and then it'll, it'll help.
In, in regarding that, um, we, we got the question previously about the impact on instructional time, so will you be reporting on that as it develops?
Yes, we will. And there is some, um, impact right now, which is why we're really looking at especially the PE piece and the art piece, and really, um, marrying the curriculum with that, so that, you know, PE's doing some, some brain breaks while they're working on that. You know, a, a natural time to do some breaks, that, you know, during writing time, the art teachers are meant to help support the art. So we're working on that, but we'll continue, we're, we're keeping track of all of that.
Can you ask, just out of curiosity, and I know it's not probably not really public, but I'm thinking art and math usually end in the top.
Yes.
And with physics and brain work, we end in what was reading in ELIs.
Yes, yes.
That's exactly it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So they're working through all that.
I think so.
It is, it does, it does. So it's a, a good opportunity.
And so it's gonna be in all three towns.
All three towns, yes. To prove that, yes.
That's awesome, that's so exciting.
We didn't want to impact kindergarten first because we just.
Cause it's kindergarten first.
Right, yeah, I did, they did, yeah. So that's, that's the update, yes.
Employment.
Okay, this is a long list.
Yes, do we have to do these each individually?
Each individually, um.
Kay, get your hands up, ready, ready. Motion second.
Kate, you're gonna have to say yes or no. Can you see her? Okay, is she gonna raise her? You'll.
Kate, you're still muted.
Okay, was she muted? Alright, let me unmute you. Sorry, Kate.
We sh, we shut you down. Oh, there you are. Okay, I'm gonna actually turn you to us so that I can be sure that I'm recording you appropriately, was that?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, the first, um, new hire is Laura Thompson for Noble Middle School Science for a one-year only. She has her masters, um, from the University of Memphis. Her last teaching position was in Hampton, Virginia, uh, for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade science, they relocated to this area. So that's Laura Thompson.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ashley Capone for Milton School Special Education Resource. She graduated from American College with Special Education. She has most recently been in ed tech for us, um, at Milton School.
All in favor? Here's my.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And then we have Alston Armstrong for North Berwick Elementary School for the art position. She has a masters from Maine College of Art, and she was working at Glor, she was, uh, at Glor Middle School, that is her internship. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
We have Nicole Gleason for, it says North Berwick Elementary School Literacy Coach, but that is incorrect, it's a district literacy coach, and that's halftime. She has a masters degree from Leesley University. She has taught at Bonny Eagle as a classroom teacher and an interventionist and instructional coach.
I'll make a motion, second.
Yes.
And then Stanley Scontrus. Stanley, um, has, is, um, up for a nomination for the Noble High School Math position. He has a masters, um, in, from the University of Illinois. He was most recently at Marshfield Teaching Math.
I'll make a motion, second. All those in favor?
Nice.
Thank you. Okay, and Stephanie Santy for Huzzy School Second Grade. She has, um, her masters from Pacific Lutheran University, and she was recently a kindergarten teacher in Washington State, and they just relocated to Maine, like just relocated to Maine, a couple days ago. The next.
Sorry, I make a lot of.
Stop, Dave.
Yeah. Second, all those in favor?
Thank you.
And then Lynn Preble for Huzzy School Third Grade, and this is a one-year only position because somebody's up for maternity leave. Um, a ma, she has a masters from Lewis and Clark, Clark College. She was most recently an instructional specialist in my early in Portland, Oregon.
I'll make a motion, second. All those in favor?
Jennifer Ornway, um, to work in special education as a social worker for Huzzy and Milton School. She has a masters from UNE and is coming from, um, Connections for Kids.
Not a sweetzer.
It is not a sweetzer, but it did say sweetzer.
It does.
It does say sweetzer, but it's Connections for Kids.
Connections for Kids are different, oh, okay. You made a mistake.
I'll make a motion, I'll second. All of those in favor? All those in favor?
Okay. The next one is Kelsey Goodwin, uh, for an occupational therapist for Hanson and um Lebanon Elementary School. She's currently um an OT at York Hospital, she graduated from New England.
I'll make motion. Second. All those in favor?
Okay, and it keeps coming. Okay, page four, okay. Emily Carrier, uh, for special education for Lebanon Elementary School, social worker. Uh, she has a masters from New England College, and she's currently in private practice.
Any questions? Second. I see you got off a lot of therapists on this, do we have a whole bunch lead, or what?
We did, we had um three OTs leave, we had some speech therapy openings, we had some special education openings.
And the social worker positions, Jen Ordway and Emily Carrier actually are each part-time filling a full-time position. So they are just taking, we split it up.
We have each, can we explain that one more time?
So Jen Ordway and Emily Carrier, we had a full-time social worker position that um has just been broken into two parts. So it's, they, they split the position in two, because these folks are still, they're half-time positions, yeah. But they're still, they're actually still doing their thing half-time as well, yeah.
They're private.
They're private, yeah.
Okay, Crystal Goodrich, Noble High School Occupational Therapist. She was working at um the White Mountain Regional School District in New Hampshire as an occupational therapist.
I'll make motion. Second. All those in favor?
Thank you. The last occupational therapist, um Catherine Camery, uh, for Milton and the Middle School.
I'll make a motion. Second. All in favor?
Thank you. Deidre Smith for Milton Music Teacher, this is part-time, the University of New Hampshire. Uh, graduated from the University of New Hampshire and is coming from Ball River School District in Massachusetts.
I'll motion, oh, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say relocated up to Dover.
I'll make motion. I'll second.
Discussion. Just when you said part-time, we were facing a halftime, so is this a halftime position?
Yes.
I keep on moving into, moving up on the wheel.
Yes, yes.
Thank God.
Okay, Stephanie Wiggington.
Hope we got a.
Did we do?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, all those in favor?
Mm-hmm.
Stephanie Wiggington for Noble High School Spanish. Um, she has a masters from Kent State, and she was most recently an MSAD third class.
Glad to see him coming this way.
I know, it should really be. I'll make a motion. Second. All those in favor?
Okay, the next one, Catherine Boudreau, it says grade one, it says math grade one, so it, just take out the grade one.
Okay.
So it's math, um, at Noble High School, a masters from USM, and coming from Stanford School.
I'll make motion. Second. All those in favor?
The next name should look a little familiar. So Mary Fitzgerald, who retired um as the director, uh, felt like she wanted, assistant director. Felt like she wanted to come back to teaching, she wanted to enter career teaching. So she um applied for, and um we're nominating her for Noble High School, grade eleven point eight, for Special Education Case Manager.
I'll make motion. Second. All those in favor?
All right. And then we have Sam Grant for Noble High School Health Teacher. Sam first graduated from Noble High School, then UMF, um, and just finished up an internship, so this is the first position.
I'll make motion. Second. All those in favor?
Some of you might remember Sam, he was on the school board, who was?
Yeah. A student rep.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, you did that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Cindy Westney for Noble Middle School for the Behavior Intervention Teacher. She has a masters degree from Antioch University. She is most, was most currently at UNH. She spent many years in the Keane School District working um as an um adjustment headswalk.
I'll make motion. Second. All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay. Sacri Dusmaris for Noble High School Chorus for one year, we have a teacher out on leave. Um, so he uh most recently was teaching in Franklin, New Hampshire, re- again, relocated to this area.
I'll make motion. Second. All those in favor?
I think there's a long line of musicians in the, I think, where, yeah, yeah, okay. Um, the next one is Melissa Moran, we are nominating up for the district float nurse. Graduated from Rika College and is currently at Wentworth Health Partners, so will be finishing that and joining the Esco Natus.
Also a noble graduate.
How many years? I'll make motion. Second. All those in favor?
Okay. Now we're going on to resignations. So we have one resignation for Katie St. Pierre, uh, for an occupational, she was an occupational therapist.
We filled, is that one of those?
We filled, yes.
Motion to accept? Second. All those in favor?
Okay, and then Kristin Sanzon, who was our district float nurse, um, she took a position in Kidley.
Motion to accept? Second. All those in favor?
And two retirements, we have Sharon Gutwiff, who um was a longtime teacher at Noble, uh, North Burwick Elementary School, and was most currently our STEAM Integration Specialist. She's been in the district for twenty-three years.
Motion to accept with thanks and regrets, listen. And I say that. All those in favor?
And this one's coming a little early, but um Brenda Cravens, our Transportation Director. Her um date for her retirement is November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. She's been in the district forty-two years.
Crazy.
Yeah, so.
On September thirteenth, it'll be forty-two.
Do we do any kind of like, besides, like a clock or watch? Yeah, watch, something like that, but yeah.
She may not want the watch.
No.
She's on like three o'clock in the morning, but yeah.
Motion to accept with thanks and regrets. Second. All those in favor? So do we currently have any unfilled positions?
Yes, we do. We have three bus driving, driver positions. Um, and as recent as two days ago, one of them resigned. So we're, we're doing pretty well. Um, and we have four ed techs for Huzzy School for our more intensive programs that are unfilled, and a few Title One, like two positions of Title One still left to fill. And then we also have um the part-time Excel teacher in Lebanon to fill.
I can't remember if we've ever had a year, well, we had everybody tired.
Was it pre-COVID?
Yeah.
It must have been pre-COVID.
I think ed techs unfortunately are the most difficult for us, and, and drivers especially, yeah.
Just, just a question, um, we, earlier you mentioned there's a district wide um literacy coach there.
Yes.
You know, we're usually Mel- Melville, but we're, uh, absolutely not looking for a half-time literacy coach at Melville anymore?
Last year, her position morphed to be district wide, half-time district wide.
Oh.
So she was housed in North Burwick, and, but worked in the district, so that's, yeah.
But is she, so she's half-time this year?
Correct, for the district.
For the district, how she's based out of?
No, she's gonna be based out of Huzzy School because there's space.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's, right, there's an office for her at Huzzy.
Yeah, there's, there's an office for her.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
I have plenty of questions.
We are very fortunate, I mean, we have openings, but I think you have probably seen the news that some districts are struggling a little harder than we are with that, and so we are feeling very, very fortunate.
All right. Do you have, have any others?
I ju- just want to, yes, I don't think others on the business.
To the minutes?
So minutes that we couldn't approve because we didn't have four minutes, I'll take that on line.
Right.
Oh, the June twentieth minutes? Yes, I forgot.
Okay. Can we have a motion for a minute? We'd need another one too, because I don't think others on here. We just have one other.
Well, I'm.
Do you want to miss a motion for the twentieth minutes? Or just wait till next? It's a two-hour table below, didn't we? I don't think we did a table, voted table later on, too, and what table? I think it was a conversation about whether residents are gonna be able to get clean or whatever, but.
Right, right. How many of you were here on the twentieth, twenty?
So.
Kate was there.
You guys were not able to vote yet. So one, two, three, four, five, I guess we could do that and, and get them done, that's fine.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve minutes of the twentieth. Second.
Who was the second?
Questions or corrections? Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
Two, three, four, five.
I'll just say.
And if you wanna put in a, because we didn't.
We want a motion to add other to the agenda tonight?
Southern A.
Yep.
Okay. Second. All those in favor?
Yes.
We're the only other, right?
Yes, the other is that if you had looked at the facilities, um, information from Harriman, that packet that we had a couple weeks ago, on page twenty-eight or twenty-nine, it referenced that there had been a previous facility study.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that was done in two thousand and two. And it's taken us a little bit of time, um, and at Harriman, it took them a little bit of time to track that down. So we do have it electronically, so we can share that with you. Um, some of it is not relevant anymore because some of it, the town of Grohl owns some of those buildings now. Um, but we will share that with you just so you can see that. Um, it's, it's quite lengthy, like a hundred pages, which, so we're gonna just share it electronic.
Yeah, it's a hundred and fifty pages.
Yeah, so just be on the lookout for that.
I'll, I'm just sharing a minute, actually.
Um, I just have a question, kind of wrapping up, having to do with the tour and everything. What are we gonna discuss and make a decision on what we're gonna do with the situation?
We have a meeting with Harriman on next Thursday. So on the agenda for Thursday, next Thursday night, we'll be, um.
Are you talking about that or are you talking about the bleach?
Talking about bleach, okay. Because, I mean, I'm assuming that study's not gonna be done till before winter. So we gotta make a decision before the ground freezes.
We just get to talk about it tonight if we want to, I mean, we've just had the conversations, so at least you can, can talk through what you're seeing and thinking and. And if you get to someplace that you can, and if you need to, you can, you know, table it to the next time, whatever. But you're right, the, the decisions need to be. Needs to be.
I think it should be on the agenda before we vote to make a decision on that, someone. Oh, yeah, I agree, I guess.
Yeah, that's fine.
Agenda for next semester, session.
Yep.
Any other?
Others?
Yes, I, it is a lot, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else have any others? Okay, does anybody in the audience want to have any, give us some public input?
Do you want me to?
Sure. Or you could just do it from here.
Uh, my name's Sean Rick, resident of Northbrook, and I just have a question on, um, with the recent, um, hiring and leaving of the boys soccer coach, there was some discussion online. Uh, brought up the question, is there a policy, um, for the school district about using personal emails versus school emails? And like, how does that communication work? Um, this kind of, I don't have a student in that area, but um as a soccer coach, going through kind of the programs of, um, every year we have to get certified on how to communicate with the kids, making sure that the parents are involved. A lot of the discussions in talking with some of the parents that came up were, they were left out of the process. They, there was a lot of questions on, I don't know what's happening here. And just wondering if there's a, a, a policy on that, and if there isn't, that may be something that the board wants to look at and adopt as, like, if you're a coach, you have to use this email address, not a personal one, just to stop blurring the lines on.
So we, so all coaches can have an MSAD?
Coaches do it.
Yes.
Email address, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we want to do that anyhow. Can I wait to just press that?
Communication.
Yeah, so I'm sure they have an app that's for only the students, and it's very, there's a lot of pressure right off the bat for this, the incoming freshman especially, to know what's going on, and they're just too young. And they're, yeah, there's, thankfully, we're invited to be on the app, so we can see, um, but, yeah.
Which again, seems like a little.
Hamburg's coaches would have something about communication.
Yes.
And we do have policies, we do have internet use policies.
And just communication with students in general. So do we?
We'll reiterate that.
Do we have a soccer coach or not?
It's a big room.
Any other public input?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
So next week we are.
Next week we are.
It's a regular.
Regular place.
First.